We got the executive session chair downstairs.
Now, would you like me to do the roll call? Okay, Commissioner Berkowitz. Commissioner Osborne there. Commissioner Norton.
Here.
Commissioner Marion.
Here.
And now Fisher. Let the record reflect that all of your elected officials are here in the counter for it.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for the people that are in trouble or need help or whatever Okay, we have the minutes. The minutes are not quite complete, so we defer the approval of the minutes to the next session. And the next item is report on an executive session which was held on October the 14th by four commissioners. Who's reporting on it?
I usually will. Okay. The Board of Commissioners met in executive session on October 14th, 2012 at 5:35 PM at the second floor of the Town Hall. A motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Norton, seconded by Commissioner Berkowitz. The four commissioners voted in favor of going into executive session. The reason for the executive session as provided for by the Maryland Open Meetings Act was to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed were mediation and legal issues related to the position taken by the mayor and his legal counsel. Persons present at the closed session was Jay Gulliver, the town attorney, Calvin A. Bonnimer Jr., the town administrator. Excuse me. The motions that were made at the meeting were the motion by Commissioner Norton, seconded by Commissioner Marion to alter the meeting. That motion passed 4 to 0. A motion by Commissioner Norton, seconded by Commissioner Berkowitz to go into executive session, that motion passed 4 to 0. There was a motion made by Commissioner Norton, seconded by Commissioner Osborne to seal the minutes of this executive session due to pending legal issues. A motion by Commissioner Norton, seconded by Commissioner Marion to leave executive session. And then a motion by Commissioner Marion, seconded by, I'm sorry, motion by Commissioner Norton, seconded by Commissioner Marion to leave executive session, that motion passed 3 to 0. A motion by Commissioner Marion, seconded by Commissioner Osborne to adjourn the meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 7:29 PM. Now, also, I would like to add, as part of our discussion that we've had over the last couple of days in terms of the approval of the minutes, I wasn't at the last meeting and it's come to my attention that inadvertently the board may not have read into the record two executive sessions that were held by the Ethics Board. And so, at that time, I'd like to read those executive sessions for the Ethics Board into the minutes. On September 4th, 2012, at 5:30 PM at the second floor of the Town Hall, the Rising Sun Ethics Board held an executive session. A motion to hold the executive session was made by Chip Slayball, seconded by Jim Jones. The persons in attendance on the Ethics Board was Chip Slayball, Jim Jones, and Dan Fox. The reason for the executive session was to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed were review state requirements for updates to the Ethics Code. Persons present at the closed session was Jay Gulliver, the town attorney, Calvin A. Bonnimer Jr., the town administrator. The action items taken was a motion by Chip Slayball, seconded by Dan Fox to adjourn the meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 7:30 PM. And the next executive session held by the Ethics Board was held on September 11th, 2012, at 6:00 PM on the second floor of the Town Hall. A motion to hold the executive session was made by Chip Slayball, seconded by Dan Fox. Chip Slayball, Jim Jones, Dan Fox were, I'm sorry, Chip Slayball and Dan Fox were in attendance, Jim Jones was not in attendance. The reason for the meeting is provided by the Open Meetings Act was to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed was review and finalize final comments for the draft Ethics Code. Persons present at the closed session was Jay Gulliver, the town attorney, Calvin A. Bonnimer Jr., the town administrator. Actions taken at the executive session was a motion by Chip Slayball, seconded by Dan Fox to adjourn the meeting. The meeting was adjourned at 6:55 PM. Thank you, ma'am.
You got some set goals.
I mean, we're obligated to read it into the record, it's almost really obligated to do.
Okay, first item is, Mr. Taylor will talk to us about parking in Rising Sun.
Thank you very much.
Seems like a heated subject.
My presentation will be very brief. I am living, currently living at the 7th Kepels Mill Court, down off of Mount Street. Two suggestions I had of areas that could be studied as possible parking solutions. I think from what I understand, these have already been considered and that there's at least some positive thought as to moving forward on those. And that's over where the previous water tower was, right at Walnut and Cherry. There is a wonderful flat area that looks like it could accommodate as many as 40 or 50 spaces, which I think would be a very nice way to attract potential business people downtown, especially with this block along here which is becoming almost entirely vacant commercial space. So I think that'd be a really nice way to attract business. It would be an ideal place for people to park that would be patronizing businesses on that side of the street. So I think that would be at least one potential solution. And then, maybe with a little hint of selfishness, down off of Mount Street on the right-hand side, on Kepels Mill is a townhouse development. We have a limited amount of parking. So if you and an immediate neighbor or even an adjacent neighbor are having a gathering with even more than a handful of people, parking suddenly becomes a major issue. So looking at Mount Street, as you're facing south, once you get south of Brinker Court, all the way down to where the road narrows, about 50 yards south of Kepels Mill, the right-hand lane is very, very wide enough to, I think, accommodate parking on the right-hand side. So someone had mentioned that maybe there would be an issue with fire trucks making it down there. I don't really think that would be an issue particularly because you can't park on the right-hand side going north.
Are you saying going south?
Going south?
Going down the hill or up the hill?
Yes.
Down the hill, it's going north.
It's north. Okay, I'm sorry. Going south as in downhill. But going toward, going toward Route 1, I'm sorry for the confusion there. So going toward Route 1 on the right-hand side would be a logical place to allow for Two other areas outside of parking, so that's really all I wanted to present on parking and to see if maybe we could study that potential solution over at the old water tower and then also maybe all of Mount Street, but it seems like it's a little bit narrower at the top. So it almost seems like south of Brinker Court would be a logical area to consider all the way down to where it narrows just south of Kepels Mill.
North.
Yes. On the right-hand side as you're going toward Route 1, I'll keep it with that. There is also talk of, we're talking about, at least I know you were exploring the other a couple of weeks ago about how to revitalize the downtown area. Just something to put in the back of your minds, Jerry and Jim are considering having a sous after hours, maybe one weekend evening a month where we could have some, somebody with acoustic guitar up there in the display area, clear out some of the front tables and have maybe some desserts and coffee drinks, something like that, just to allow for some activity in Rising Sun in the evening hours. And give people here an option of enjoying some social item in Rising Sun as opposed to having to drive to northeast or elsewhere.
Where would this be at the?
In sous, sous restaurant.
Oh, at sous.
Yeah. Yeah, sous after hours.
Little crowd.
Well, we could limit it to 40 people or what have you. That's all I really had to share, but I am happy to see that the mayor and commissioners seem to really be developing good chemistry and a working relationship, so I'm thankful for that.
You must know something I don't.
It's my hope anyway. All right, thank you very much for giving.
Okay. Mayor's report. I keep repeating the same thing. I ran on making a more cost-effective, responsive, transparent, collaborative government. And I don't really see that we have that in Rising Sun. And, you know, we had the executive meeting to talk about what we were going to do. I wasn't present, so, you know, I haven't heard any detail, you know? But time is going by. We need to settle our differences, whatever they are.
Right.
I don't even know what they are.
Okay.
So I wish somebody would tell me.
Can I finish with one other suggestion? This is something that I've wanted to do for a while and I've put it out there to some of the commissioners. I think I've also mentioned it to you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to either host or be a server at a dinner that will include basically everyone that we see up here around the table where each person would be given five minutes to share what your positive vision is for the town of Rising Sun. So the person with the salt shaker would have the floor for five minutes and they could share their positive vision for the town. Everyone else can listen while the other people are speaking. And then when each person's had a chance to share, then you can comment in a constructive way on each other's ideas. But I think the idea of just the acrimony and the strife, you just need to, even if it's just for one night, put that aside. I'll be the server and I'll get you a nice meal together and you all can talk in positive ways about the future of the town.
Well, I think the meeting that they had was supposed to be about conflict resolution.
Okay.
I don't have any idea what they.
I don't have any idea, no.
So, I would be interested to know, but.
I'm still hoping.
You know, I sometimes feel like a mushroom. You know what a mushroom does? Lives in the dark and keep this in the dark and feed it manure. But, you never heard that?
I have, I have.
Okay. Well, or maybe I'm an untouchable, since I was in India for 14 months, maybe I became untouchable. I don't know. No, I'd like to know. Okay. Okay, staff reports.
Mayor, the first thing I'll do before I get into the town administrators' report is I'll have Ms. Whacker do the monthly financial.
I'm sure that you noticed your book is a little bit thicker than normal and I promise that I will not go through three months' worth of financial statements. Basically, what I've done here is reinstated June 30th, 2012. This is within dollar rounding issues between us and the audited financial statements, which are just about completely rounded up. Calvin and I have to get over on one issue Thursday with regard to one of the notes for Karen. And we have to read over the M-DNA letter which goes in the very front of the audited financial statements. But hopefully she will get her final information on Thursday and then she will finish up her part of the audited financial statements. Due to the fact that we changed June and it's only a little bit higher by about $40,000 in revenue and net-wise, and that's due to the police grant which we didn't know exactly what all the numbers were going to be when we printed the June financial statements. So of course that will have an effect to July, so I reprinted July for you. And then we did August. If you go back to the August financial statements, you need to move a little farther till you hit August. To the town statement of government financial statements for two months ending August 31st, 2012. So basically here, all we have is two months' worth of activity. Our year ending is June and we have July and August. I'm going to move, move it to this one. I feel like I'm ignoring Travis over here. So has everybody gotten to August? You will notice that the assets are significantly higher and that is basically due to, in July, the county sends out the real estate taxes and we book a receivable for those. And there is about $380,000 some thousand dollars.
Page one.
Page three.
Page three of August.
Of the government, go with one more.
Okay, go with one, thank you.
After you pull that one.
Right here, right here. Thank you.
In August?
There we go, thank you.
It'll say at the top, balance sheet governmental funds, August 31st, 2012. Mayor, it should be before the fold-out page. It's a circle page like this.
I don't see it yet.
Page three.
Yeah, he doesn't have it.
That's the supplement, right here it is.
Oh, thank you.
So we all on the same page now? As you will notice, your receivables are significantly higher and that is due to the fact that the real estate tax bills went out in July. So the total assets are $955,472.64. The accounts payable that you have of $12,201.98 are bills that we accrued for. We normally do not have accounts payable, but we're accruing for them and those bills are hitting in the future. They are from bills that belong to June, but we actually paid after June. Unrestricted funds is $943,270.66. If we turn to page four, which is the next page in the book, you will see that we have real estate taxes of $822,370.13. And this is basically what we're projecting to come in. If you look across the top, very top line, you will see that now we are allocating that real estate taxes out according to how each of the expenditures are budgeted into the funds. Then you will see that the total revenue is $878,878.75. The expenses for the first two months of July and August are a total of $206,054.89. We have a change in fund balance of $672,823.86. Now, we're not going to have revenue of $80,000 some hundred thousand dollars. That's just due because the real estate taxes are all booked at the very beginning because we have already, well, not us, the Caesar County sent out those bills. And if you look down at the line, the very last line, you will see that most of the fund balances are in the positive, other than waste collection. And that's because it does not need any allocation of real estate taxes, the fees basically cover it and there's, you know, some months are higher than other months. Any questions? The next you will come to are some fold-out pages, which is budget to actual. I'm not going to go through each of the funds right now, but if you go to page eight, I will, we are basically right now, because we recognize the real estate taxes all at the beginning of the year, we are only $108,929.66 revenue that we have collected according to budget year-to-date at this time. And some of this stuff, it gets prorated out over 12 months, but actually in October we might collect more of it. The taxes kind of happen at various different points in times. You will see that, and what's more indication and what you want to look at here is the expenditures. We budgeted that we would spend $350,000 so far in the first two months. We've only spent $206,054.89. So we're good to the budget by $144,809.69 total overall. And this is just the government. Any questions? They get more interesting as you've got only 11 months left and you're comparing budget to actual. The next is proprietary fund. We have cash of $116, and we're on page three again. We have cash of $116,828.90. We have in MLGIP, $971,266.74. For those of you who do not know what the MLGIP is, that's kind of like our investments. We have the due to and due froms from sewer and water of $89,631.85 and you will see the offset in the liabilities for the same amount right under accounts payable. We have service charge receivables of $135,293.13. And that's the receivables for the water and sewer bills. We have restricted cash of $12,024,751.40.
$12,000?
$12,020, $12 million, $24,000, sorry. $751.40. That's the restricted money for the sewer project.
You said you were on page three, that's right.
Page three.
That's page three.
Of the proprietary fund. You're still in the government. Pass the flip-out pages. Then there'll be a yellow page. Then it'll be the proprietary fund. There. See where it says water sewer? Restricted cash and cash equivalent of $12,024,751.40. We have capital assets of $9,076,051.38. Accumulated depreciation of $2,493,221.51. Our total assets are $19,920,601.89. We have the accounts payable, which is due to the bills that are cycling through from the audit and then we have the due from the water due to the sewer, which was a contra account to the other one. We have due to bay restoration of $7,291.32. And that basically, the money flows in and flows right back out. And then we have liabilities of $14,374,916.96. The only big difference that you'll see is that there's $4 million of the net assets and that's reserved for the difference between the fixed assets and the accumulated liability. If we go to page four, you will see that the total revenue for the two months is $163,316.88. And we have total expenditures of $148,683.46. Basically, the operating income for the proprietary funds was $14,633.42. And then we had interest income of $4,550.11. And that's mainly due on the $12 million that we have in the bank. We earn interest on it. So the positive change in net assets is $19,183.53. Any questions?
Can we go back to the governmental funds for just a minute? I have a question and I probably ask this every time. What do we get due from the state of Maryland? That $382,000, what is that?
That is, well, it's not all, it's a combination of state and the county. The majority of it is your real estate taxes.
So that's an amount still not paid on the, that's what was.
That's what people.
That was our income that we haven't gotten yet.
Correct.
All right.
We have to book that receivable and then there, I believe that not all the police grant money came in until after August. I mean, I believe we got some of it in August and then it kind of, they taked on. And then there's, I believe, another smaller amount that they, it was about $4,000.
So from the real estate taxes, we got about $500,000 in the real estate taxes.
Correct.
Okay.
Back to page four, I've completed that. The change in net asset is $19,183.53. I'm going to skip to the very last page. Budget to actual variance. We budgeted that the proprietary fund would be $158,353.90. We've actually collected $163,316.88 for a positive revenue, of actual revenue over budget of $4,962.98. We budgeted expenditures of $145,107.96. We expended $148,683.46. So we actually spent $3,575.50 more than we budgeted. We have, but we're still in the net income. We're positive change in net assets over budget of $2,790.75, including our interest income and expenditures. Any questions? And that's all.
Patricia?
Yes.
Just for a point of clarity, the one line item that would be throwing the expenses over is the accounting and auditing. And that is because we prorate the one time bill that we pay to the auditor over a period of time, but we paid the bulk of it this month.
This month then we'll pay the final bill probably next month.
But I mean, that's the main thing that's giving the, that's the main reason for the $3,000 running over expenses is because we prorate all of our expenses over 12-month periods.
That is correct.
But the audit bill comes in one time and we pay that.
And also my fees are higher during the audit time because she runs me ragged. So yes, those are, they will go down significantly as, because you're talking about a $20,000 bill plus on her side that we carry in basically at the beginning of the year, that's prorated. Any other questions?
Okay.
Now, I'll go to my report now. Now, I'll go to my report now. I have a couple items to talk about tonight. The first one, which I think is really cool, and I think it's one of the coolest things we've done here in a while, is we collaborated with Ms. Vicky Reckerman, who is the administrative assistant to Al Wine, the Cecil County administrator, and an initiative to turn the town tank in recognition of breast cancer awareness. I think, you know, Ms. Reckerman deserves, you know, a good acknowledgement for, and to be commended for her enthusiastically getting this project up and running. It was sort of a last-minute thing. Delmarva Energy is the one who provided the, I'm going to call them like a window film, if you've ever put a window film on your window, very thin material that had like a pickish hue to it. I also want to thank our Public Works employees, Ron Thomas, Chris George, Darrell Bader, and Glad Coats, for working diligently to figure out a way to get this thin tissue paper-like material to be able to support its own weight in those lighted globes without falling on them, catching on fire, or melting. And if anyone would have been down at the Public Works garage, it was like being at a crazy lab experiment where everybody was offering different things, and they were cotton pipes, they were building wires, they were doing all kinds of odd things to try to get that paper to stand up in there. And as you can see, they're still standing up, and they look very elegant and classy at nighttime. So I just want to recognize the people who spearheaded that very important initiative. An update on the sewer plant. The project is about 16% completed, and is starting to take some shape. Concrete slabs have been poured, and the foundation for the headworks building is nearly complete. The outflow piping is also been installed. The subcontractor, Dutchland, will be coming in next week to begin construction of cast-in-place clarifiers and other similar components. We are still waiting for Delmarva to begin running the three-phase power supply to the plant. As soon as this is determined, Armstrong will run the permanent lines to the site following the Delmarva route. Although we still have a long way to go, we are still on target to meet the April 2014 completion date in the contract. The issue with Delmarva is originally they were going to run the three-phase power down the Route 1 corridor, but State Highway will not give them permission to do that. So there's three other different options, some existing easements that they're trying to see if they can follow, and this is a decision that's totally up to Delmarva. And so we're working to try to see what they're going to do, because Armstrong will follow in that footprint once they move along in that. The ICMA conference, I attended last, two weeks ago, the ICMA conference, which is basically the International County and City Managers Association. And I've got to say, in all the years that I've been in municipal government, this has to be the single best event that I've ever had the benefit of attending in terms of the quality of training. It was a five-day event. Every day, there were anywhere from maybe 15 to 25 different classes that were taught by individuals who have doctor's degrees in municipal government, master's degrees, are world-renowned. The ICMA does a lot of internships with countries abroad that are discovering democracy for the first time. For instance, as our country has been trying to bring democracy to Iraq, what gets unnoticed is organizations like the ICMA that put and sponsor interned or municipal government professionals to go over there and meet with people over there, that teach them how to set up councils and mayors and structures of government. So they have a, they have a, definitely have a footprint in municipal government. I was able to attend, like I said, every day there were about five or six classes that I attended. They typically run from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 to 6:00 at nighttime. There were classes on economic development, community revitalization, social media, websites, citizen engagement, legal aspects, just a whole host of things, and it was just a great training. Ms. Wagner had alluded to the fact, the audit, it is nearly completed with the exception of the M&amp;A letter that Patricia Wagner spoke of. Around the corner, there are two boxes, I think, the 42H TV monitors. I want to recognize the chief and the police department. We receive those monitors as part of an emergency services grant that will enable us to improve communication and citizen engagement that our town needs, because we'll have the ability to mount these monitors strategically here in the room. So whoever playing videos or some type of presentation, you know, maybe in the future, financial statements could be put up on the screen, so that residents can follow along and see exactly what the elected body is seeing. The other item I wanted to bring to your attention is, our next meeting is a workshop, and because we were not able to meet a couple weeks ago, I do have a couple of issues to bring up to the board, and I know Commissioner Osborne will share. We have some sidewalk work we'd like to do, and we're gathering prices and initiatives and stuff like that. So our next meeting should be full of a lot of municipal government nuts involved for the town, people over. The last thing I wanted to bring to your attention is the meeting schedule for November and December. If you look on the back page of your agenda here, our next mayor and commissioner's meeting is going to be 11/13, Tuesday, 11/13, that's fine. Then there is a planning and zoning meeting on the Monday after Thanksgiving, of which the planning and zoning board is going to reschedule for the first or second week in December to jump in between Thanksgiving and Christmas. There is a town, Town of Rising Sun Business Meeting on 11/27, which would be the Tuesday after Thanksgiving holiday. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board, if anybody had any travel plans, and if there was a reason to postpone it or reschedule it, you could do that now, or begin to think about that now. Then the planning, or the mayor and commissioner's meeting for December will be the 11th, not a big issue. I'm not sure if the Greater Rising Sun Chamber will be having a December meeting.
Well, November's been moved to the 14th because of Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay. So has everyone heard that, that Chamber meeting's been moved to the November 14th?
Right, and no December meeting because of the holiday.
And no December meeting. The planning and zoning meeting actually follows on Christmas Eve, and as I just said, they're going to cancel that meeting and move it back to the first or second week in December. And then the town hall, the mayor and commissioners' meeting actually follows on Christmas Day itself. So if you wanted... Yeah, if you wanted to let the public now, know now, or you're going to, I mean, typically in the past, the town has just canceled the meeting outright, it is not trying to reschedule it, but if you wanted to, if the next workshop meeting, you can probably decide what you want to do, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And that's all I have. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Your old business? Hearing nominal, what is the new business, any new business? Hearing nominal governor's commissioners' comments. Mr. Burford.
Just want to remind everybody, Wednesday, October 31st is the trigger treatment for the town, 6 to 8, so I know not everybody in the town's here, but we have, driving around, these calls, and I live in Somerville, and the kids start out in front of the cars, and everybody pays attention, to be honest with you. I have, change, you know, the chief, he plans to have extra personnel out during those hours also. That's all I have, just kidding.
Mr. Marion?
All right. Triangle Park, we, our Dog Park, Triangle Park, we have all the approvals for the Wetlands Fortune. We are meeting, we're going to have a final meeting for approval from MDE. The slated construction for that park is going to begin in mid-November. Community Park, we are, the Public Works crew is formulating a plan to deal with the low-lying areas in Community Park. We are also getting prices on making repairs to the storage shed. The Civil War reenactment was a wonderful success. I know many people that attended. I want to say special thanks to the Historical Society and Diane Earhart. I was actually at the MML Conference in Hagerstown, which was also a great event. Our attorney, Jake Gallow, spoke on effective meetings, and our MML Dinner was a great success. Special thanks to all the town staff and the police chief for securing the speaker. Our Christmas carol, our Christmas carol is going to be this, on December the 4th at 7:00 PM, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much tonight, I just want to echo what Commissioner Marion said. I also attended the conference in Hagerstown, and I found it to be very valuable. Running effective meetings, social media, there was a lot going on, it's always a very good event. And I'm hopefully learning as time goes on to, to do better as a commissioner. I think MML is a very, it's a great resource for all of us, I'm glad it's there. The MML Chapter Dinner, the Cecil Harbor Chapter Dinner was last Thursday, and Rising Sun did host it, and I think it was a very successful evening. Just a quick update also on planning and zoning, planning and zoning, and I think our acting chair is here, Mr. Warnock is here, he was acting chair last night. We did meet last night. There were no cases before us. The only, the only thing that came up, we did talk about a little bit at length, was a possible glitch in our zoning code that does not address the sale of guns and ammunition as permissible using the town zoning code. And that's come up because there is business in town that has approached us about selling firearms. So it is a legally recognized business, and we're going to try and see how we can address it in our zoning code to make sure that they can do business and be successful, but we don't have any issues, you know, like being, for example, you know, too close to a school or something like that. So we're looking into that. And that's really about it. I, we, the town administrator already talked about planning, going to next meeting, and one of the things we were waiting on to pick a date was when the carol sing was going to be. We're just going to combine our November, December meetings for early, early December. So since we have that date for the carol sing, we can now probably nail down a date for our planning and zoning meetings. So that's all I have, thank you very much.
Commissioner Osborne?
I'm going to thank Dave for his suggestions, they were very good suggestions, by the way. We'll take those under consideration. I also attended the MML Conference in Hagerstown, it was very informative in a number of areas. Civility and had a run of an effective meeting. So we all learned a lot, and had some fun doing it. I want to thank the Public Works Department for working on the concrete, the sidewalk on Cog Avenue. It looked very nice, I haven't walked on it yet, but I plan to. I also had a complaint from a resident on Haynes Mountain Turrell, and I did take a look at the situation out there, it's very deplorable, and I will be meeting with Public Works Department this week to see what we can do before we do our major street repair next year. I want to thank all of the people who have sent me emails, I do read them, I do take them under consideration, I do not necessarily respond to all of them, because I haven't yet formulated a response. So be aware that I do read them, you're welcome to send me emails any time, I do read them. I may not respond right away, but I will eventually get to it. Thank you, that's all I have.
You start off with permission, is Diane here? Citizens in... I think we're going to have six minutes tonight, so... Okay, Augie, you were the first on the list.
No, sir, I have nothing to add.
You passed. Okay. Lynn Griffin?
Actually, I'd like to go in, second, with, yeah, go for it. Now that you guys have had that meeting on social media, can we all get on Facebook, please? I'm sorry? Now that you guys have all attended that meeting on how to deal with social media, a lot of us younger folks are very involved in things like Facebook, event invites, so you guys know how many of us are actually coming, and kind of had a case we need to move. And another thing is, do we have any ordinances on my old dogs? For like, that are barking more than like 10 minutes?
Uh, yes and no.
Okay. I'll email you.
Something, yeah.
George Walker now. Mister, I'm not sure how to pronounce him, but Mummy, is that right, or Moomy, or?
I haven't marked anything that I was going to do.
Okay. Okay. Jeff Alken, Matt.
Thank you.
Alkenbaum.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to give you all a song. This is the Maryland State Constitution.
Good luck.
Thank you.
For those who've heard me speak before, this is the law, this is, whether we agree with some of the provisions in here or not, is subject to our personal opinion, but this is what we're governed by. And my concern in this, these days is that we're just not paying any attention to it. I've been afraid that most, most of the legislature's down in NAPAs, I haven't even read this thing. And yet, every public official, every judge takes an oath to uphold this. Now, I've addressed this issue before, and I would like to read Article 37. It says that "No religious tests are ever to be required as a qualification for any office of profit or trust in this state other than a declaration of belief in the existence of God, nor shall the legislature prescribe any other oath of office other than the oath prescribed by this Constitution." I'm not going to read all of Article 36, but I would, I would ask you, request that if you don't read anything, at least read the Declaration of Rights. These is our protection. This is like the Bill of Rights of the U.S. Constitution, this is our protection. This is supposed to govern the way any elected official operates. It's to protect us. We should become aware of it, too, because we're allowing a lot of things to happen that are not Constitution. I think a lot of people are starting to wake up to where this country is and the jeopardy we're in. I'd just like to read one portion. "Nothing shall prohibit or require the making of reference to belief in, reliance upon, or invoking the aid of God or a supreme being in any governmental or public document, proceeding, activity, ceremony, school, institutional place." Says, "Nothing shall require it, but nothing shall prohibit it either." So, for those who might be concerned about prior court cases, it doesn't count. This document is your guiding light. This document is your king, if you would. And this document, in Article 32nd, requires a declaration of belief in God. Now, I wrote you...
Could you cut a angle, you're talking to us instead of the whole...
Well, yes, but you're the ones, I appreciate, I hope everybody can hear me, but you're the ones that need to take action on this. the ones that need to take action on this. This is for our protection, but this is something that you folks, particularly the elected officials, but actually I believe it would apply to anybody holding an office of profit or trust, should respond and respect the Constitution and make that declaration of belief in God, if you so can, in good conscience. Now, I didn't mean all the things, you know, we're, you know, money, money, jobs, all the, these are all the big important issues. This seems to be such an inconsequential thing. And I'm not going to harp on too long about this, but I'm going to leave you with one little thought. It's a quote from Luke 16:10. Says, "He that is faithful in that which is least will be faithful in that which is much; he that is unjust in that which is least shall be unjust in that which is much." What I'm hoping that you will begin to do is set a precedent for other public officials. I suspect that you're, you're in much company, that many people are not following this provision in the Constitution in the state of Maryland. But if you want to provide true leadership, even though you might think this is a small issue, I think it requires you to demonstrate that you're willing to follow the Constitution of the state of Maryland. Because if you won't follow it in the smallest provisions, how can we trust that you're going to follow it in the more serious provisions when you're having these meetings that are closed to the public? And big sums of money are being spent that come from the public. So I'll leave it with that and I thank you very much for your endurance.
But that part of it has been declared unconstitutional.
Well, as I've said, since you, well, wish the dialogue, I am all aware, I'm aware enough, even past you, this paper that gave my opinion on that 1961 case, Picasso versus Watkins. That case only applies to that particular court case. It is not binding beyond that. And if you submit yourself to that single court case, then you are allowing a judge to become the dictator and not the Constitution. Your oath as an official is to the Constitution, not to the judges, whether they be federal or state.
Okay, thank you.
My main focus this evening is in regards to the Junior Explorer Program.
Well, could you speak a little louder?
Sorry. My main purpose this evening is...
Name and address.
Dolores Smith, 807 East Maple Heights Court in Rising Sun, Maryland. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Junior Explorers Program.
Well, somehow, do we have an amplifier? I don't, can you folks in the back here?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
If you could speak a little louder, it would be better.
I'll try, I'll try.
And turn that around a little bit so you're talking to them as well as us.
Is this better?
Yes.
Sorry, my throat is worse, sorry. Mr. Berkowitz, I want to address you first, because you had phoned me on a Sunday evening in early September in regards...
A little louder, keep the volume up.
Sorry.